The meeting will now come to order. We're holding the meeting, our monthly meeting of Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. We welcome all of you here and ask that you join me in a pledge to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda as has been submitted.
It's President's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
My second.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. At this time, we'll be having some recognitions of some of our young folks, and Jane Oakley, I believe, will start with you.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here again for this auspicious occasion again, and for our newest member of the school board, I'll explain, the bus rider of the year comes from nominations from school bus drivers throughout the year, nominating for improvement, leadership, citizenship, and bus safety. We had several nominations again this year, and I'm pleased to present an Eastview student who will be a middle school student next year, Mr. Benjamin Mays. He can stand right here. You can stand, you don't have to sit when the bus is moving, okay? You can stand, you don't get yelled at. His bus driver is Mrs. Vicky Cox, who is with us this evening. His parents, Wendell and Rebecca Mays, are here, his brother Luke, brothers Luke and Will, and his principal, Mr. James Small, is back here. It was fun to be at Eastview, my alma mater, to present that award on the last day of school. Ben is recognized for his leadership, his citizenship, and the way he mentored and helped the younger students this year learn what bus safety was all about, and he was just a real, a good helper and all-around good student. We wanted to acknowledge that in front of you folks tonight, so I will have Mr. or Dr. Hodges presenting something for the school board.
I have a certificate. It says, "Congratulations." This certificate is awarded to Benjamin Mays, 2014-2015 Fayette County School Corporation Bus Rider of the Year, signed by Jane Oakley and signed by me. Congratulations.
Good job.
Benjamin, I would like to say on behalf of the school board, congratulations and thank you for being an example to the other students of our corporation, and congratulations.
Good job.
Good work.
Excellent. Good job.
I'm seeing, I'm not sure these are agenda items. Okay, later on, there is a place we have, is it Sherri Kendall? Is Sherri here?
Mm-hmm.
Sherri, okay. And then also John Newhall, is that correct? Is John here?
Yes.
Okay, there is a spot later on in the agenda, so we're not skipping over you, so I didn't want you to think we've forgotten about you, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, now I believe we're ready for another recognition, and Anna Duncan is with us, and I'll turn this over to Anna.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to again come in front of you, and thank you for your support of the Community Foundation Education Fund. For many years, this has been a great resource for bus drivers, support staff, coaches, school board members to contribute weekly through their pay, or every other week through their paycheck to support this, and the money that comes in goes right back out to the teachers that we know are suspending excess funds to make their children's lives better and brighter and more educational resources that they can supply. What the fund gives teachers the opportunity to apply for funds, and Trish does an amazing job with her committee fielding those and getting them out to the greatest need and the most impact.
Thanks, Anna. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I would just like to thank Anna for the support and the foundation for the support that they give the school corporation, not only through funding, but also just the partnership, I think, that we formed. We've had many conversations over the past couple of years just about what the foundation can do to really support the students and the families of Fayette County, and so we definitely appreciate you.
That's a good partnership.
Yeah. Yeah, we're up to $165,000 in the education fund, so that's, yeah, it's good news. And we do have two grants to fund this year. One of them is with Fayette, from Fayette Central Elementary School. Bev Riley is going to receive $2,695 for a set of iPads to use in her classroom for her student project, so we'd like to present you with a nice check.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we also will be presenting Lynn Smith, $1,000 at Connersville Middle School for our cardio program and for additional, she's going to redo some equipment with our cardio program, so.
Thank you, Anna. Yep, thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. All right, moving along to our consent agenda, several items that's within. That would be the approval of the minutes from the regular business meeting of May 12, 2015, the personnel report, which contained retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera, approval of the May 2015 Claims Number 392492, Number 39615, the Title I, Approval to Apply, donations, which would be the acceptance of a donation of $10,103.35 from Everton Elementary PTO to be used to purchase smart boards for classrooms, donation from Contract Industrial Tooling valued at $120. Those are the consent agenda items. What is your pleasure board?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
My second.
Thank you, Ms. Kerschner. Is there, are there any questions, any discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Moving now into our action items, the first item is the personnel report. Dr. Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett, Dr. Hodges, members of the board, several persons for your consideration this evening. Under certified staff, and all of these folks would start at the beginning of the new 15-16 school year, they would be Lindsay Brooks, science teacher at CMS, Jeremy Horn, social studies CHS, Sony Jones, coordinator of student services WTCC, Brian Mitchell, social studies CHS, and Krista Phelps, temporary math teacher at CHS. She would actually be replacing Vicky Long, who was on a grant, and she is serving as a learning coach, and she would be replacing Vicky on a temporary contract for this upcoming school year. And under support staff, Tricia Osterman, bookkeeper CHS, July 1, Caleb Jordan, computer technician CHS, effective June 8. And under extracurricular, we would have Andrew Beckham, head football coach CMS, effective June 2, Julie Bell, special education department chair, beginning of the new school year, Doug Lagier, assistant wrestling coach CMS, effective beginning of the school year, and Juliana Risch, 7th and 8th grade cheer coach, as of July 1. In addition, at your table tonight is an updated summer school recommendations for this summer 2015. We had a couple of changes, a couple of folks that were unable to fulfill their position, and a result Rebecca Lee felt would be fill in an elementary position, and Kim Duncan would serve as a math teacher in the second session at the high school for the summer session. I think all the rest of the folks are pretty much the same, and I will not read all those names. That includes also our Jump Start Program, it's going to be held in the last couple of weeks of July, so a whole host of folks and support people that will be providing some summer support for learning and for our students this summer, which began actually yesterday. So those, for your consideration this evening, Mr. Burchett.
All right, you've heard the personnel report. Dr. Bayer, do I hear a motion to accept his report?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
My second motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Next is the curriculum and textbook adoption. Dr. Reiki.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett, Dr. Hodges, members of the board. The new textbook resources are being recommended for K-12 social studies and grades 7 and 8 English Language Arts. These recommendations were approved by the Fayette County Curriculum Planning Committee on April 30. They were shared with board members last month, and then you had the last week of May to go to the Resource Center and review the materials if you were interested, et cetera, and so we are recommending those resources for your approval this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to adopt the K-12 social studies and the 7 through 8 language arts curriculum and textbooks?
I shall move.
Okay, Ms. Kerschner, do I hear a second?
I will say.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Dr. Reiki, we have approval of the textbook rental fees for the next school year.
In your packet, there are the updated costs for the upcoming school year. There's a 25% state reimbursement for the textbook rental, so we do our calculations accordingly. The textbook fees for the elementary students increased moderately from $34 to $46 due to the new social studies digital tax, as well as the newly implemented $30 digital rental fee, K-8, in support of personalized learning with the adaptive software pieces. We have kindergarten fees at $144.94, first grade at $178.23, second grade at $164.47, third grade at $162.87, fourth grade at $164.30, fifth grade at $167.06, and sixth grade at $176.58. Textbook rentals for Connersville Middle School and the high school and the career center are determined by the courses selected by the students, so we have an average range based on a student coming through. CMS is currently about $184, and C, I have a CMS. CHS is $193, and then the career center gets their listings forward in July. There is also explanations and some details of how those are determined attached to your memorandum there, so for your approval this evening.
Okay, thank you. And you had a chance to look over those before the meeting, so do I hear a motion to approve these textbook rental fees for next school year?
I move to approve the textbook rental fees.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
My second.
Thank you, Ms. Boy. Are there any questions?
How many of our students get textbook assistance? Because that's a chunk of money.
Well, depends on 65 percent or more.
65 percent or more, because that's, that's, that's an awful lot of money for textbook rentals for all grade levels, and just concerned about the economics and the economics and all.
Support and stable support. One of the biggest jumps was in the high school with the ACP composition, where significantly all dealt with $146 just for the textbook. So when we get to those levels, the textbooks are very, very expensive.
It's like college textbooks.
Well, now with the digital pieces too, that, you know, somebody had to, you know, put those together, those resources, so we are supporting the digital learning piece, and we need to, and it's, the costs are going up.
Here's another question. You can always sell your textbooks when you were in college to the person that was taking it next semester. Is there that kind of piece in some of the early college books that increased the cost of this so much?
Yeah, they can do that. If it's a college-level book, it's the same book that the colleges are using in the area that are doing the teaching, so they can do those, they can sell those on the secondary market, just like another college student can. That's, because they buy those books.
Yeah.
The other students are renting.
Right. Okay.
That's just a unique piece of the college.
Yeah. It was a way to make some money.
Okay, you have heard this textbook rental fees, yes. Yeah, I almost lost my place here.
Sorry.
Okay, and we've had a motion, and we've had a second, so I guess we're ready to vote, okay? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next, we have the CHS athletic projects and the permission to advertise for bids for the CHS tennis court replacement. Ms. Pollitt.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. The finance committee, Dr. Hodges, Mr. Duncan, and Mr. Judd all met to discuss a couple of projects related to athletics and CHS that have been on our radar for quite some time. Both of them are of very high need, the first being the tennis courts, because we continue to experience major annual maintenance expenses with those tennis courts in that they will, I don't know if bubbles is the right word, but they'll crack, they'll raze in spots, and they're in need of replacement and even going down to get that soil to a better foundation. This was a part of the Athletic Master Plan that the board authorized and put together, or Schmidt put together for the school corporation. It is one of their recommendations. In addition to that, we talked for the last two years about the need to get the softball facilities equitable with the baseball facilities. And one of the first steps for that is concession stand, restroom, press box, access for those fields. So once we had let all of the projects and contracts that we had budgeted for, I went back and revisited the fund's budget versus actual, and I believe that we have the opportunity to take the excess from the budget versus what the actual bids came in at, plus some athletic money, plus the career center doing a significant amount of work on the press box, concession stand, restroom facility over the next school year as a part of their curriculum. The finance committee supported moving forward with that, so we did contract with Schmidt for the design of the tennis courts and with LWSC out of Richmond for the design of the softball facilities. This is the first cog in the wheel of the master plan over there whereby we would have two nice softball fields and the soccer field. We need to get this building constructed first. So tonight, I'm asking for permission to advertise for the bids for the tennis court replacement and to move forward with the career center providing as much service as possible on the construction of the facilities for this girls' softball and future soccer area. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. I think Mr. Duncan would be happy to share his thoughts, as well as Mr. Judd, related to the need for these, should you desire.
This would be done by the people in construction trades, just as they build houses or remodeled houses.
For the softball area.
For the softball area. So this would be a project like they built houses and remodeled things, so we have, the people at WTCC are willing, the building trades people are more than willing to go along with this as part of their curriculum?
They actually contacted Mr. Duncan about this being a possible project for us to be able to move it forward faster than we thought we might be able to, having to fund the full cost. Now, I do want to be clear, they can't do the whole suit of nuts.
Oh, no.
But they will find contractors, particularly like for the block work, that's a prime example. They're, they're not skilled enough to do all of the block work, but Brad will get them over there, Mr. Walton will get them, the kids over there, working side by side with the contractors who do the various tasks that the building trades program cannot do. Mr. Sargent's class will help with the electrical piece of the project. So we met with the architects and administrative in CHS and Mr. Walton last week, and everyone's very excited to get moving forward with this.
Well, the students would actually be invested in the project, and this could be a real win-win for everybody. It's certainly needed.
It is needed. They are both of high need for different reasons.
They've done several things in town, if you're not familiar with that. I know they did the restroom at the park.
Yeah, and they've, and they've done the ones over at the soccer fields over by me, and once upon a time, they built a house in my neighborhood.
Any else, anyone else have a question or comment? Ms. Pollitt, there's so much in that, I almost don't know how to do it as a motion, so could we just say permission to advertise for bids and to move ahead with the softball project? Would that be sufficient?
Yep, that's, that's what we need.
All right, did you hear that, everybody? So do I have a motion? That right? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second? Mr. Hilton, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, okay, the motion carries. Next, we have appointment to the Fayette County Library Board. Dr. Hodges.
Thank you, Board. We were notified by the library board that there's a vacancy in one of the seats that you appoint. We did advertise, asked for people to respond. We received two responses. I talked with the executive committee of the board, and we are prepared this evening to recognize, or to recommend that you appoint Mallory Wagner as your representative to the library board.
Okay, you've heard the, this recommendation for the Fayette County Library Board.
I would like to make that motion, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Boy. Do I hear a second?
My second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any questions, comments? All they, okay, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, the motion carries. Okay, next this evening, or now we're moving into public comments, and this evening we do have a couple of people who would like to address the board, and we'll start. Sherri Kendall? Oh, yeah, I do need to make this clear to you, that persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and/or comments may address the board at this time, but comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private.
Okay.
With that being said, it's Sherri, right?
Yes, thank you. My name is Sherri Kendall. I'm a proud graduate of Connersville High School. When I got married and I had kids, I was living in Shelbyville, Indiana, and I was determined to tell my husband that we were coming back to Connersville for my kids to go to Fayette County schools. So I find it sad that I have to stand up here before you today and to tell you that my last child did graduate just this past Sunday, and before I can bring this, before you, I had to wait to make sure that my kids were out of school so that they didn't have any repercussions for me standing here talking to you about this. But one of the main subjects that I'd like to talk to you about is the Spartan Code. The Spartan Code is something that parents and children have to sign, and in the Spartan Code, we are, the child is held 365 days to uphold this role model that we're supposed, that they're supposed to be. I feel that if you are going to hold a child who is going to make a mistake, and believe me, my child made many, my children made many mistakes, and I'm fine with them getting in trouble, but I am the parent of my children, and if my child would like to go to, say, Florida on spring break, again, I am the parent of that child, not the school system. If my child would like to go to Colorado for Christmas break, again, I am the parent of my child, and my child is not in school, and my child is not doing any function of the school system. So I feel the railroad track cannot be a one-way railroad track. So if you are going to hold my children and Fayette County children up to these high standards, then let's hold the principals, the coaches, the teachers, the athletic directors to the same high standards that you expect our kids to be held to, 365 days. I'm not getting into personal issues. I find it sad that I have a folder of incidents that happened to my family, and if this is just my family, how many other families are out there and that are scared to come forward when it happens? Because if you stand up here and you put your child out there, the repercussions on your kids to go through the school system is terrible. So I just asked the school board, I'm a Fayette County citizen, I vote, I'm a Fayette County taxpayer, I have a business in Fayette County, my heart is about Connersville, and I love Connersville, my family has dedicated their lives to Connersville, and I just feel that the school board needs to look at this. I find it sad, and I find, and I find it very sad, and some of these incidents people know about, but do you think one person came into my office and wanted to see the actual documentation of it? No. I sent an elementary school, I sent a certified letter to five different people. One was to Dr. Hodges, one was to the principal somewhere, one was three others to other people, and I have the documentation right here. And I would think if you received a certified letter, should somebody not contact us? I find it sad. But again, like anything else, it only takes a handful of people to make things bad, but if you do away with the bad and you open up and you really see what Connersville and Fayette County is about, it's a great community. And I thank the school board for letting me speak today, and I thank the school board for standing up and being our eyes and ears and being elected to the school board. It's a tough job. Kids are different today, I get that. Parents are different today. I'm a trustee in Fayette County, I see it and I know it, but I do find it sad. I find it sad about the Spartan Code, kids are kids. Kids are going to make mistakes. I want my kids to have role models that they looked up to, and if they're going to sign the Spartan Code and the parents signing the Spartan Code and saying they're okay for 365 days for you guys to parent our children, then hey, teachers, coaches, assistant principals, principals, athletic directors, sign the Spartan Code, be the role model for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Thank you, Sherri, for being here. Okay, we also have another person who wanted to speak, John Newhall, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hi, my name is John Newhall. I'm the parent rep for the band boosters. I'm also a bus driver. We're just, we're searching for some answers as to what is in the future as far as concessions are concerned, specifically chart wells. Our proceeds from concessions not only support the high school bands, but they also support 6th through 12th grade. Monies that are obtained through the boosters fundraising helps purchase marching shows for the band, music, repair of equipment, some of the equipment that we can purchase, a new band trailer that was used that was to no cost to the school except for licensing and registration. The band trailer is used for taking the... The band trailer is used for taking the marching band to shows. They go between schools, like from the high school to the middle school for shows, concerts, and various other events, including ISMA, Indiana State School Music Association concerts, where the bands are graded. Coincidentally, the seventh, eighth grade concert and advanced band scored goals in their respective concerts. We're very proud of that. The band saw a profit this year of about $6,900 that goes to all the bands. Monies through concessions at the football games go through a comprehensive process to make sure all funds are accounted for. This includes the treasurer counting the change before the game. There are three different concessions. The money is recounted by two members at each concession stand and they sign a statement to such. And after the game, the same process is reversed. They count the money, two people count the money, sign a receipt, hand it to the treasurer, the treasurer deposits it, and then they have to report it at our monthly meeting. Obviously, all the monies go to the band and helps relieve some of the burden of our school corporation. We feel that any reduction in this crucial funding for our band will surely hamper abilities to maintain and grow the band. We have a great core of volunteers at each concessions, at each football game, we have at least 12 parent volunteers to run all the concessions. We have a great core of volunteers and some outstanding students in our bands. Being the oldest high school band in the country, I'm sure that this board and school system would encourage the growth and strength of our bands. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Not really. Does anyone have questions or concerns about this or whatever?
John, I think this came up as a result of something that's coming up to chart wells that Jane had talked to us about earlier. And frankly, your concerns were some of my concerns because of how the monies were supposed to be split up.
Correct.
And I think it's really important before the board takes any views on this is to recognize that the band boosters make money that the band, the music department at Connersville Middle School, high school, and the elementary schools simply don't have.
Correct.
And if, and there's no way to get this money. Their budgets are constrained. So this is volunteers working for the kids to allow more kids to participate, and this is the only, is my understanding that football concessions are your only major project now because of some other prohibitions that have been put on about selling other things?
Yes, we do have, we put on a dance, a dinner dance.
Yeah.
And we do some fundraising through POTS, but the major fundraiser is...
Major source of income is the football concession.
Yes. And I totally understand because you always hear about monies being misappropriated or somebody sticking it in their pocket. We've gone to great lengths to make sure that does not happen with our organization, and we are very open to anybody that wants to look at how we do our procedures. But I, you know, I totally understand that this happens all the time throughout school systems throughout the country that money disappears. My thought was maybe there should be more training on how to handle your money, what you should and shouldn't do with the money, what's allowed. I mean, because most of the booster organizations kind of just go on their own. Maybe they need some guidance as to how to fund it, how to, where to put the money, who should count it, who should be accountable. Maybe that would help.
Does, do the band boosters buy the product that they sell?
Yes.
Okay. So they buy, they purchase it and then the profits that they make are strictly the balance sheet type situation?
Yes, and last year we went through each of our products that we sold and saw what we were selling and not selling, eliminated some. Our major, almost 50% of it is just buying soda.
Okay.
And we're locked into that, we can't do that.
If you'll allow us, I think Dr. Hodges would like to make a comment.
Sure.
Both Sheri and you will take these under advisement and talk about, you know...
I'd be happy to have some folks sit down and talk to you.
That'd be great.
The intent of this was never to short you money.
Right.
The information that I've been giving is you'll actually receive more money than the $6,900 that was never intended to, to harm the boosters.
Right.
We appreciate what you do, we appreciate the work that you do. There are some other issues that I just assumed I came to at this point.
Right, yes.
But after the meeting, I will talk to you and we'll see when we can get together and I'll get the right people in the room to kind of walk you through this.
That'd be great.
And what our thinking was.
Sure.
It wasn't a reflection on you, we think this is something that's going to be better all the way around and it's our belief, and it's a one-year pilot, it's our belief based on information we have, it's going to be a better deal for you than what you've done the best. But we'll talk about that.
That's what we're hoping for.
Yeah, that's our belief.
But they're skeptics, of course, in any organization.
I understand, I understand, but I'll talk to you after the meeting.
That's fine, thank you very much.
Again, thank you both for being here. Okay. All right, let's move on, if we will, to the superintendent's discussion group reports. Are there any? Seeing none. Principal Director reports? Seeing none. The Director of Personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Dr. Hodges, members of the board, once again. When I came to you in May, I looked like we want to have around 10 teachers to replace. It's changed a little bit, so we're up to about 17 now. So it's been a couple more retirees and a couple more folks heading back home, be closer to home, take positions there, so that just happens. Hopefully not get to the level of having 30 to 35, we've had a couple of years there. But I did a research article recently and it says about 10% of your staff is going to turn over to normal situations. So 240 teachers, 24 teachers would be about normal, if that is such a thing as normal. So we're in the ballpark there and we have some great candidates we brought to you tonight. We hope to bring you another great set of candidates for the July meeting, so we're moving right along. The food truck, just in its first full week basically, being out on the road, has served from June 1st to June 8th over 1,700 meals. It's a great start. That does not include our summer school and all that, I'll have some other updated figures for you next month. And the last thing I'll leave you with, and you'll be receiving a formal invitation and letter, many of you participated in the past, but with our new teachers comes the new teacher academy, which will be held the last Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of July, it'll be July 27th, 28th, and 29th, and many of you are able to attend at least part of one of those three days. There's a luncheon with the chamber and many of you are able to attend that. So it's a great three days for our new staff, some new opportunities for growth for our new folks coming in and getting fully acclimated to our school corporation. So we always look forward to that as the kind of my official start to the new school year, so we hope to see you and again, we'll provide some information to you directly in the mail. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple of things, I want to let you know that our summer projects are beginning. They have started removing some of the floor at Spark Bowl today. Supplies have been delivered for every tennis row. Some preliminary work has been done for the plumbing at the high school. The vest beul of the high school will not begin until in July, but our understanding is a lot of it's prefabricated, they bring it in, they put it up, and they walk out. So, we are moving forward. I appreciate your support of moving forward with the tennis courts and the girls' softball. These improvements will really enhance the athletic facilities.
Okay, thank you. Assistant Superintendent's report?
Well, I just wanted to thank the board, Dr. Hodges, for working with me and employing me the last three years. It's been an awesome experience, I'm going to miss everyone. But it's time for me to move on, but I just wanted to thank you and thank you for supporting me and trusting me and good luck to you.
Thank you. Dr. Hodges, Superintendent's report?
We're just to piggyback a little bit on what Dr. Barry had to say, excuse me, about the food truck. We're serving about as many students per day as what we used to serve for the whole summer when we tried to host those schools, those meals in the schools. So Siobhan's idea of taking our show on the road is really, really paying great dividends. One of the things that we talked about in cabinet a few months ago was what are some things that we might be able to do to help support teachers? We've had a lot of initiatives going forward. What can we do? We came up with this idea of mini-grants, and mini-grants are mini-grants, a lot, we have a lot of people who have always done work during the summertime, but we just kind of threw out there to see what kind of projects would you be interested in doing if they were funded, what would it look like? We had applications, we were able to fund 29 projects that impact 90 people, so that's a duplicated count, but 90 teachers are working through those mini-grants and it's, we're thrilled with the turnout on that for the first time. That was a conversation we had, Kathy Penda took and ran, took off and ran with that, and so I just wanted to share that with you. And I want to thank Kathy for her service. This is her last board meeting with us unless something unforeseen happens, and we have to have a special meeting before the next time, but we appreciate her service to Fayette County School Corporation. We wish her nothing but the best in the future. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
That's all I have.
And that brings us to For the Good of the Cause, and I was just waiting until we got to this part, but we do thank you for all of your contributions and all the hard work that you have done, and we wish you well and understand you want to be near your family, and I certainly can understand that. But thank you sincerely for what you've done for the Fayette County School Corporation. I would also like to say, Mr. Judd, graduation just went wonderfully, and I don't know who all is responsible, but thank you and your staff, and next year try to have the air conditioning.
(laughter)
I can motion for that. All right, can I second?
No.
And lastly, Mr. Lake, it's good to see you in the audience. I hear you have been well, so good to see you out and about, and obviously you're doing better to be here.
I am.
Yes.
Excellent.
Does anyone else have a comment? Anyone? Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries, and we will adjourn.